All right, ready to go? All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to ask that our, who's calling the role tonight? I'm going to ask Sherri Simonsen, our deputy clerk. Go ahead.
Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you, and we did hear from councilmember Kenny yesterday that she was not going to be able to make it this evening due to family items. So unless there's objection, we will consider her absence as excused. I'm going to ask that councilmember Scarborough, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Scarborough.
Thank you.
The first item that I have that we have on our agenda this evening is a recognition of service for Bridget Tuttle. Bridget, you have been extremely active in our community and you continue to be. And I am so very much grateful, thankful for the work that you're doing in our community and for your service on a variety of boards and commissions. Going to go ahead and read those really quickly. The, you were on the city council in 2010. You were a planning commissioner from 2012 to 2022. Community Human Services Advisory Board in 2020 and 21. Economic Development Advisory Board 2018 to 2022. And Parks, Parks Planning Committee, Parks Board Planning Commission Representative between 2016 and 18. And Homeless Policy Advisory Committee, which led to us having the Community Human Services Advisory Board in 2019 and 2020. It is, you have always been somebody that has always brought forward and continue to, to this day, really important issues, really thoughtful ideas and solutions. And I so greatly appreciate the work that you have done and continue to do for our community. I know that you recently had to leave planning commission and, and also EDAB. Thank you, I was looking for that on my list and EDAB. And I felt that it was really important that even though this doesn't represent ending community involvement, that at least for this chapter, I wanted to take a moment to recognize you and to thank you for your, for your work and your service to our community. So from my heart to yours, thank you. I do have a councilmember, councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I emailed you, Bridget, but I'm so thankful for, you've been here since I got on here. And I'm so thankful for your input in all of the different ways you've been involved with the city. And I see Riley, your daughter's online. And if I could just tell you, Riley, your mom has been a tremendous asset for the city and she will continue to be. And I know you're proud of her, but we're all proud of her too, so thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Fisher?
Yes, I have also worked with you on the Homeless Policy Advisory Committee and also a planning commissioner with you. Always enjoyed our time together. Your brain works much different than mine. I think it's smarter and more intelligent than mine and definitely has a better vocabulary. And I always enjoyed the different perspectives that you brought up and thoroughly enjoyed working with you in those different capacities and completely and totally appreciate the amount that you have been active within our community. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gamble?
There it is, it's red. So it's been 11 years that I've gotten to work with you, Bridget, and just truly appreciate all that you've done. That's a lot of pizza boxes, by the way, in that picture there. And it's always something that, you know, if there is something going on in the community and a donation to be made, you're front and center raising your hand to help out. So it's not just boards and commissions, it's in every aspect and public school foundation, all that different type of stuff. So I know we're going to continue to see you. I just appreciate everything that you've done over the last 11 years, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
Like Kyle, I got to serve with you on planning commission and that was my first foray into public service of this level and you were very helpful, so I appreciate all of that. We also got to serve on EDAB together and that was a lot of fun because as business owners, we have that certain perspective of government that other people really need to hear. So I've always appreciated your leadership and your words of advice and personally all the advice you gave me as well. So thank you for your years of service, Bridget.
Thank you. Bridget, just a couple more things I'd like you to reflect on because I know that it's hard to reflect on this sometimes, but especially as a planning commissioner and doing your work with Parks Advisory Board and Economic Development Advisory Board, you're going to be able to drive around our community and so will your kids and so will we and see you in the work that's around us. The work that you've done as a planning commissioner, the vision that you put into those documents, yeah, they're just, you know, they're just words on paper, right? In a binder. Yeah, but they become, exactly, they become two giant signs, they become a new subdivision, they become a new park. And I hope that, I hope that you take a moment every once in a while and just look around the community and just notice I had part of that. That was, that was a vision that I helped create. That was a product, that was a deliverable, that was a something that I was part of. And again, you're, you're continuing to serve, so I don't want this to sound like this is it, but I do want you to, to take a moment every once in a while and just reflect on that's there because of the work I did. So, thank you. I don't know if you wanted to say anything, I have a couple of things I can, that we're going to bring out to you, though. Okay, so we're going to bring some things out to you. So I'm going to ask the council to come down and join me down there. All right, thank you very much, everybody. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda and that is public hearing. We have a public hearing this evening under section five, 5.1, public hearing for proposed amendments to chapter 2222 MMC Downtown Commercial Zoning District and associated amendments to chapter 2212MMC definitions and possible first reading of ordinance number 0242022. We have Kate Turtolo, who will be presenting on this as I understand it. So we're going to move her forward. Hey Kate, you're in the panel and you've got the floor. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas, and I just wanted to say, following up on Bridget's, thank you, this is actually partly because of her. So this is proposed amendments to the downtown commercial zoning district. I introduced this to the full council on August 9th. And again, this is a very strategic proposal addressing an issue that came about actually resulting from the adoption of the 2019 Uniform Development Regulation. Next slide, please. Maybe, okay. So the proposed code amendments are specific to, there are actually four different planning areas in the downtown commercial zone. These are specific to the promenade, which is illustrated in the brick red color. And it's all the buildings that have areas fronting on Main Street. And then the orange colored area, which is the historic main, which also includes the second and third stories of the buildings in the promenade. Next slide, please. So these are just, the next few slides are just the highlights of what was recommended. The first one was a clarification. There was some confusion about what the promenade area entailed. And then you'll see the very last sentence is also stricken and that was because it was limiting it to commercial uses when in reality you have commercial, entertainment, restaurant. And so we wanted to fix that when we were in here. Next slide, please. And then this is really the heart of this proposed amendment. In 2019, the entertainment uses were removed from both the historic main, which is again that orange area really focused around Maine and Lewis, and then the promenade planning area, which again is that brick red along Main Street. And so this was to reintroduce the entertainment uses for these specific zones. Next slide, please. And then the last one was, since we were in, making a few changes, it was an opportunity to make a few corrections and add a use. So during the planning commission's conversations, one idea that was discussed is why don't we have the ability for somebody to come in and paint pottery or do stained glass? And so this new use is being included, but also required a definition. So this will be part of the definition changes to Monroe Municipal Code, section 2212 definition. Then in your packet, I just kind of want to go through what's been provided for you. First in the agenda bill, again, it gives a brief overview of how this proposal came about, the meetings that we, that were presented to the planning commission and the Economic Development Advisory Board. It includes the draft ordinance, if you're ready to consider it this evening. Again, it has another just straight copy of the proposed full set of code amendments. It includes the planning commission findings of fact, the history of the downtown commercial zone and how that entertainment uses were introduced and removed and, and all the timing. It includes the SEPA determination of non-significance, the checklist, and then the letter from Department of Commerce. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Kate? Okay. And you're looking for a motion this evening on the, oh, I need to open it up for public hearing, I'm sorry about that. So if you are, if you are interested in speaking on this item, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand now. If you're here in the audience, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Okay, nobody in the audience has raised their hand. Is there anybody who'd like to speak who is on the attendees list? If so, again, raise your, your hand or hit star nine if you're on the phone. All right, seeing none, I'm going to turn to the council. Is there a motion to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing? Okay, I have a motion to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing from councilmember Gamble and a second, I would say, from councilmember Scarborough, if I heard him correctly. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six zero. Councilmembers, any discussion or a motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion to close the public hearing from councilmember Gamble, a second from councilmember Davis, any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? I'm saying none, we will move to vote, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six zero, thank you. We're going to move back on the screen real quick to the motions. I know that councilmember, councilmember Gamble probably has it right in front of them. All right, there we go. Going to go ahead and acknowledge councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Move to accept as the first reading of ordinance number 024202, amending chapter 22.22 MMC Downtown Commercial Zoning District with associated amendments to chapter 22.12 MMC definitions clarifying the promenade planning area of the downtown commercial zoning district, reinstatement the entertainment uses with the historic main and promenade planning areas of the downtown commercial zone, and revise and/or adopt association definitions for uses within the downtown commercial zoning district, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from councilmember Gamble, a second from councilmember Fulcher. This is for requested action number three, as shown on the slide under 5.1 public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six zero, thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This would be item number six, public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you'd like to address the council this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand if you're here in chambers. Seeing none, if you are under the attendees list and would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand or hit star nine if you're on the phone. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next part of the agenda. That part of the agenda would be the consent agenda, councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, a second from councilmember Gamble to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six zero, thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda and that item would be, and before I move on, I do see that, is that for the next item? Okay, thank you. We're moving on to item number eight, new business. This is 8.1 approval of contract with J Ray Branding Advertising Strategic Communications for Comprehensive City Brand Update. And I'm going to go ahead and call on Mr. Heebner to present. Mr. Heebner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, sir. Good evening, councilmembers. You're all aware, of course, of the city's brand as the adventure starts here. That brand being developed as a primarily visitor centric brand is not one that, as we've heard through our various boards and commissions and other ways of engagement with the community, has not really resonated as much with our residents. Also, having been developed before, the implementation of Imagine Monroe is not fully encapsulating of what our community envisions for itself. As a result of that, we, the city staff, under the direction of Mayor Thomas, put in a plan for this year's budget to begin the process of, of doing a brand update for the city. Earlier this year, we issued a request for proposal seeking a consultant firm or partnership to assist the city in working collaboratively with our residents and local business community to develop an updated brand identity that represents the city's unique strengths and assets and is in alignment with Imagine Monroe. Six firms responded to the RFP and the responses were reviewed by a review committee consisting of Administrator Knight, Finance Director Hassert, myself, Events and Tourism Coordinator Katie Darrow, and Civil Designer Mark Newman. Three firms were selected for interviews. Those were conducted by that same review committee, joined by Mayor Thomas. And at the conclusion of two rounds of interviews, J Ray Branding Advertising and Strategic Communications out of Tacoma was selected as the best qualified and providing the best proposal to complete the project. The total amount contracted for, in the proposed contract before you this evening, is just under $185,000. $75,000 was included in this year's budget. The amount planned for this year is just under $57,000. So there'll be some carryover into next year and the remaining balance is anticipated to be included in the 2023-2024 biennial budget. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report on this item. I turn it back to you and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Rich. Are there any questions from councilmembers? Okay, alternately, is there a motion? Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Hang on a second here. All right, I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with J Ray Branding Advertising and Strategic Communications for the Comprehensive City Brand Update at about not to exceed $184,891 and expressly authorize any further minor revisions as may be deemed necessary or appropriate.
I have a motion from councilmember Davis, a second from councilmember Scarborough for the requested action in new business item 8.1, as shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, councilmember Hanford, you step out momentarily. Motion has been made by councilmember Davis and seconded by councilmember Scarborough for the requested action to authorize the mayor to sign a contract as shown on the screen. Do you have any questions? We're just getting ready to vote. All right, thank you. So we will go ahead and vote, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item number 8.2. This is American Rescue Plan, ARB, second round final award approval, also with Mr. Heebner. Rich, go ahead.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Council, you'll recall at your meeting on June 28th, most of the review committee recommendations for American Rescue Plan Act second round awards. You'll also probably remember that I mentioned there was one that had been withheld while staff took a look at the guidelines for the use of the funds to ensure that this project was in alignment with those guidelines. Mr. Pylund from the Finance Department and myself have reviewed the federal guidelines, been able to confirm that the project is in accordance with allowable uses. And we've also had an opportunity to meet last week with the potential recipient and confirm that they have partnerships within the community, one fully established and others that are, that are contemplated to assist them in, in accomplishing the project. So the proposal before you this evening is to approve an award to the hand up project for a respite program, which would provide wraparound housing and care to families that are, that are, excuse me, experiencing homelessness in Monroe. Temporary housing would be provided at a local hotel property. Their staff includes 24-hour security, medical personnel, cooks, and full-time case managers with expertise in serving families experiencing housing crises. The total award of the project is $207,997. In our meeting last week, Mr. Pylund and I discussed the allowable uses and guidelines of the funds with the recipient. We made sure that they understood that the, their project would only be eligible for reimbursement for days that the hotel rooms that they secure are actually used by, by recipients of that housing that are referred to them by their local partners. Currently, that is St. Vincent de Paul. As I mentioned a moment ago, they are working on developing additional partnerships with service providers in the community. And as they provide written documentation to the city that those partnerships are established, we'll be able to reimburse them for referrals from additional agencies. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report on this item. I again hand it back to you and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Is this hotel been identified?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, sir?
Is the hotel, has the hotel been identified?
Oh, I, it was not included in the, in the application packet. It is one of the hotels in Monroe. They did not specify in the application which one.
Any further questions? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
So, Rich, can you talk to us about accountability for the funds and how that works? If we go ahead with this? I've, I don't want to make any judgments without having all the facts. And so I'd love to know, like, how that works.
So the, the recipient and contractor, if we enter into an agreement with them, they are responsible for tracking the, the identity of the recipient that uses the, that uses the room and the other services that are associated. We, as the city, do not, will not require them to give us those names for privacy reasons, but they are required to maintain those records. And what they will provide the city with each of their reimbursement requests is an affidavit that says we have maintained these records and we verify that the recipient of these funds are eligible based on the requirements of the contract, which will be, as I, I mentioned a moment ago, days that are actually used by persons that are referred to them by local partners. So they verify that in the documentation that they provide to the city. And then if either the city or our state auditors, when they come and do our audit next year, if they go to the, to the organization and request that documentation, it has to be provided to them. And if either they fail to produce the documentation or what they, they share with us does not back up the affidavit that they provided, then they owe those, those funds back to us.
Okay, so it's not a grant. It's not a grant, here's the money, now send in your receipts whenever you're all done?
I see you're, I see you're, I see where you're going and, and thank you for that clarification, councilmember. No, it is a reimbursement based program. So they provide the service, they pay for the hotel rooms, then they submit an itemized invoice to the city saying, we, we use the room on these days for these persons that meet the criteria of the award. And once Mr. Pylund confirms that they have provided us all the documentation that we need to back up the requirements of the contract, then reimbursement payment is issued by the city.
Okay, thank you, that, that makes sense.
You bet.
What, what's, what's the, what's the track record of hand up?
We, we have had communication from both the Snohomish County Human Services Department as well as St. Vincent de Paul, that they have had working relationships with this organization, they've had no, no complaints. Snohomish County, you know, did their, their standard background as they enter into a contract with a service provider like this and they had no concerns. That was communicated through our human services consultant, Rachel Adams, through her by MJ, I'm probably going to butcher her last name, but MJ Bukovic, I believe, is the, the director of human services for Snohomish County.
Okay. I, my experience with grants and so forth, usually you're reviewing the 1099 forms from the different organizations. So does anyone do that as part of this? So does anyone do that as part of this process?
We have not required ten ninety-nine forms. We do provide, we do require, uh, W nine forms that verify their, their status as a federal, uh, organization as well as a verification of their state uh, business license with a Monroe endorsement.
Okay. And is there ever any question about, uh, providing proof that they've been audited to and passed an audit?
Uh, that has not been something that we've required, uh, up to, up to this point. Um, certainly if, if there was a, if there was a desire to add that, then that's something that we could take a look at, but it hasn't been an ongoing requirement.
Okay. It's a challenge, uh, in, in my mind, it's a, this whole thing is a challenge because it's not our funds, right? It's federal funding, but we're responsible for making the decisions on where it goes. And so if we make a good decision, the blame is here. Great job. If they make a bad decision, the blame is here. Why did you give them the funding?
Yeah.
So, um, I guess I would, I would love to know, or I'd love for us to just be thinking about, as we continue down this path and how many more rounds of grants are we going to see?
Two more?
Yep. That's based on the budget, so it could affect possibly going to next year as well.
Yes, the, the plan currently, Councilmember, is that we would open the third round, um, in September, early October. Uh, that would then put us toward the end of the year with, um, or, or early into next year with getting the review done and executing contracts. And so we're anticipating the fourth round opening next spring. So to your question, yes, it will extend into next year.
Okay. Yeah, just, just things to, to be cognizant of.
Thank you.
When, when I look over the, the list, I just, I just want to make sure we're making the best decisions possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Appreciate questions from, from both of you. Um, so my thing on this is because like it's Monroe, but they are based out of the Edmonds area. They do a lot of work in the greater county and when we're talking about governance and stuff and back, so it has to be spent in Monroe.
Has to be spent in Monroe, at a Monroe property by a, uh, by a family that was referred by a, uh, by a, a partner that has a presence in Monroe. So similarly, Saint Vincent de Paul, their headquarters is in Everett, but they have a branch office here in Monroe, so.
So all the documentation that would come through, it would be associated to, to Monroe and then.
Correct.
Um, I was adding that. And then the other thing I was going to add, Kevin, to your, to your point is that if we think back to, you know, homeless policy advisory group and now the human services, I mean, one of the things that we talked about is, man, Hank, how can we get more money or funds to help with the overall, and so this kind of fits hand in glove of one of our strategic initiatives there. So I, I get it. I mean, there's a lot of good stuff on there and it's, it's hard when we're saying no to a bunch and this is a big amount. You know, the two oh seven, so I totally get the, the, the questioning, but when you take it on the side of something that we're trying to get behind on our strategic plan and we're, we're underfunded, underfunded there, this makes a lot of sense from my perspective, um, to help in that regard. So appreciate it.
Bet, thank you.
Are there any other, uh, questions or a motion? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
I'll move to approve the American Rescue Plan Act A R P second round award to the hand up project as recommended by the city's A R P Review Committee.
I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Starborough for the requested action as shown on the screen right now under eight point two new business. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes five one. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to Councilmember Reports. I'm going to go ahead and start today with, uh, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Hanford.
Looking forward to the parade this, uh, coming weekend. It'd be nice to finally be out there. It's been a couple of years now. And, uh, so yeah, looking forward to that. I think that's all I have to report. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Starborough.
Nothing to report other than dinner from the parade perspective.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly what Kevin said. I'm, I'm, I'm really excited about, uh, the parade. It's, uh, you know, interesting because football season has started up at, uh, at the high school. And, uh, so there's always the float with the football team and there's a whole group that have never participated in that. Um, and so that's pretty good. They're like, where do we go? What is this, you know, type of deal? So there's some excitement there. Really looking forward to that. Getting, uh, kind of back in that, that normalcy and, um, and then, hey, first home football game uh, for Bearcat. Orange and black is September second, Friday, September second. So the, uh, orange and black game is, uh, this Friday. And then the first home game is next Friday. So there you go.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Foulcher.
Um, at my place of business, we recently had a Monroe School District, uh, Board Meet and Greet type of thing. It was very well attended. Parents are asking a lot of questions, so, um, that was great. Uh, this Thursday is another Meet the Chiefs, uh, Fire Chief and our very own Police Chief Jolly, um, Thursday morning, eight o'clock. So come on and have some coffee and ask him the hard question.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Foulcher. Uh, we're going to go ahead and go to staff and department reports and we will start off with our Human Resources I T Department, August twenty twenty-two report with Tyler Christian. Tyler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Excuse me, our, uh, our H R department continues to hire people. It's been quite the year. I think we've onboarded over twenty people this year and there's really no end in sight. Every time we fill one, there's another one to come. And so, as you can see in your, uh, packet, we're working on about five of them right now and there will be more to come. Hopefully have some more people on boarded on August first, or sorry, excuse me, September first. As always, I like to honor, um, my great colleagues and staff, especially the ones that have been here for quite some time. Uh, Mr. Carswell's been here for twenty years in our police department. And so that's, that's quite the feat. And, uh, Ms. Sandoval, who's also in our police department, has been here for eighteen years. And as you look at the packet, you can see there's several other employees that have been here a long time with the city of Monroe. So always grateful for them. Uh, moving forward to the I T department, uh, in accordance with the I T strategic plan that came to council, um, a couple of years ago now, uh, we continue to work through that plan. Uh, our infrastructure is really starting to grow and get more robust. That's a lot of thanks to our I T manager, Mr. Ladwig. Uh, we will, we are working on a, uh, a little bit of an update to our employee help test system. Uh, we use CommKate. It is a little bit cumbersome and clunky. Employees have to log into a standalone portal. Uh, Mr. Ladwig has built a, a system around that so that they can send the email and that email will automatically log to CommKate for them. So hopefully it creates some efficiencies and some, some ease for staff and then also I T gets what they need. So we're kind of using that in a pilot group right now and then hopefully rolling that out into September, once we get all the bugs worked out. And then finally, in my last department report, I brought back to you how we were switching over to our, uh, a little bit of a different security system um, for quarantining of, of emails. And so we are continuing to work on that and that is just a one-stop solution, uh, that is included in our Microsoft Office three sixty-five. And so we're not using two different, uh, solutions, but just creating to one solution. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Tyler? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the P D reports and, uh, turn to Chief Jolly. You're using this. I'm sorry, I skipped ten point two. We're going to go on to, uh, our finance report now with Becky Hassert, or is it Greg this evening? Hope there is Becky. Okay, Becky, you're up.
Thank you for not making me follow the police report. That's a hard act to follow. Um, the finance report is for July is in your packet. Um, and I'm available to answer any questions about that. What I thought I would do tonight, though, is talk to you about a couple of subsequent events. Um, in the investment report, we mentioned that we had one investment for a par value of two million dollars matured during June. Another one that matured during July and it actually corresponded well with our latter strategy for due dates in that we did reinvest those the beginning of August. And we, we bought two additional investments, both for two million dollar par values. And we were able to realize a three percent, um, return or investment on those, um, investments. So they will mature at the end of twenty-five and spring of twenty-six. And while we hold them, we will earn three percent interest. So that's kind of a little bit of good news. The other thing that is subsequent to July, the, our audit for this year, for the single federal audit as well as the financial audit started the first week in August. And believe it or not, they are getting close to wrapping up. We heard word this week that they have pretty much finished their field work on the federal portion. They've got a little bit more work to do on the financial pieces. So we have actually already tentatively scheduled the exit for our first business meeting in September. All is going well. There's been no issues that have been brought to us of concern. So that's always good news. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am available for questions.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Hassert. Are there any questions for Becky? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on now to the police department report with Chief Jolly. There we go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you, you have included in your packet our department report. I would point out a couple of items, including on the first page, the significant event that's listed. We had a domestic violence situation was that, that officers responded to and were able to intervene and do all those things that we talked about our police departments doing such as time and distance and de-escalation. And it was handled just textbook. They were able to get the two juveniles, the small kids out of the residence during this. Um, did not see a resolution in sight and summoned SWAT, uh, before they were able to deploy the individual walkout voluntarily and the situation was resolved. But again, it was only because these officers did a good job of not pressing the issue and, uh, responding in a professional manner. Sergeant Robinson was the sergeant that oversaw that operation. As you saw last week, he has just recently retired and we will miss him and the contributions he's made. I would also note our officer resilience program, we continue to do wellness initiatives and find ways and methods to improve the, improve the health and wellbeing of our employees and take care of them and, uh, in, in the complete way, whether it's mental, physical and financial and make sure that they have the tools necessary to be successful. As part of that, we brought in the FBI National Academy and they taught a resiliency course that was opened up to agencies here in the area. And we even had attendees from Canada. So we're trying to be that partner that we can bring people in. It also gives us a couple of free seats and we're able to, uh, share some quality training. And with that, I'm available if you have questions.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Are there any questions from the council? All right, Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
No questions, just more of a thank you, uh, of course, for all that you guys do. And then also notice on the east side of Al Borland entrance that that has been, uh, cleaned up. And I'm perfectly confident and one hundred percent confident the officers, um, were able to offer resources to those that needed them there. We had quite a few cars that were broken down there and quite a few people that were kind of hanging out in that area. So I appreciate the cleanup there.
Thanks, you, Councilmember Fisher. I would also note that Public Works did a significant amount of work cleaning up the R V that had been set afire on July fourth, uh, as well as other, uh, parks has done a great job also keeping things clean, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for our chief? All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the Public Works Report, uh, with Jake Roberts. Jacob, go ahead.
I will be Jordan, joined by Jordan Otto today. Jordan is actually the project manager. I am the assistant to the project manager on this one. And as such, she assigned me to do the lead in. So here we go. Uh, we last talked to the council about this on, let's see, uh, July twelfth. Uh, we talked a little bit about the conceptual portion of the building being designed at that point and then more of the stuff that was going on on campus, locating the utilities, doing some of that geotechnical work, the fun engineering stuff that I really like, that nobody else really notices exists at the end. Now, in any case, um, getting back to that, the plan that is included in this report, uh, maintains those departmental adjacencies that we went through several months ago now as we were doing that exercise. Um, it accounts for a twenty-year growth projection within the, the, uh, the city. And so that means that city staff, so it's built out a little bit larger than you would see will be full at first. However, as time goes on and we all probably move on to do other things, there'll be space for the next generation of, of kind of civic leadership, right? Um, a couple of things that I also wanted to go into specifically, I just wanted to thank the individuals that are involved in this process so far. Uh, they didn't really necessarily know what they were signing up for when they signed in, but a lot of people have put a lot of hard work into getting to here and there's a lot of work yet to come. I think that includes the council also for the support. Mayor definitely, Administrator Knight also. Um, then naming off the people by name, Stacy, Becky, Pam, Paul, Rich, Jody, uh, Jordan, Jason Ladwig, Ben Swanson. So that, that's a pretty big group that's, and so managing those stakeholders, Jordan, thank you for doing that. It's been great. Uh, and thanks, Council, for your support again. So I will give you all the cool pictures and then I'll take over when we get more into the boring stuff. So go for it. Lean into your microphone too there.
This here is a current space and form plan. So, um, this is kind of where we're at so far with what the building is starting to form and, and look like. So this is a view from West Main Street, looking south towards the council chambers. Um, you can see there's lots of windows that will give lots of natural lighting. Um, and there's also, you know, potential for during meetings to have, have those windows, um, like, you know, not be, people not to be able to see from the outside to the inside. And so this is, yeah, this is kind of what the building's starting to look like. You see the angled roof. Others potential for solar, um, to, to be installed at, at a later time. But it's kind of a, a civic type of building, uh, again, more potential for other events other than just public meetings to be held where we could have a gathering area out on the north lawn, um, with, with more access towards the flagpole site. Um, and, and yeah, so that's kind of the winter wonderland photo of what it's starting to look like. Go, go to the next slide, please. So here's a four different angle views of building. Um, these are just, uh, you can kind of see that, you know, it's, uh, there's, there's two different wings. Um, if you can scroll up just a, a little bit more. Um, so there's actually two main entrances to the city hall. We have a, if you look on the bottom left, that's the city hall justice wing entrance. There you go. And then on the top right would be the city hall administrative wing entrance. So they look very similar, uh, matching, but two, two different entrances to different wings of the, of the city hall. Um, the building will maintain sections of the existing roof lines to reduce overall, uh, construction costs. And it's quite a significant savings, um, from three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot existing versus five hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot if we were to completely redo the roof. Uh, next slide, please. So this here is showing the, um, it's called split shed style, um, with some exposure to the wood beams. Um, and then it's, it's showing a mixture of office cubicles plus closed offices. Um, again, lots of natural lighting. Um, there is some green spaces inside the building to improve sound buffering, positive effects of air quality, increase productivity and reduce the stress levels. You'll notice that the ceilings are, are much higher than our current office spaces. And that's to help improve the airflow and just improve the, the open concept of the, of the workspaces. And I'm going to turn it back over to Jacob.
All right, next slide, please. So looking at this floor plan, uh, understand this has actually been updated twice. I, I, these things need to be submitted, you know, a week and a half in advance. Uh, and we've been working diligently with the architect to get some updates. However, the sentiment of what the floor plan should be still applies here. So as we look at the kind of northern edge of the building, Jordan pointed out the, the glass that can be seen from the street, that civic beacon. Uh, we have a council chambers, raised dais, uh, new A V, um, access to a kitchenette from within the room. And then also access to the new plaza outside, uh, so through some sort of a, a doorway out to that area. So they're kind of bringing that outdoors in or making the indoors out, whichever way you want to look at it. Um, and then off the back of the dais there, there's a direct line back to a, an executive session room that'll also be used potentially as a conference room during normal city operations. Uh, we're on our way down to the south there. The administrative wing entrance, that remains where the existing entrance is to, to the existing building. And then you open into a reception customer service area where you can get diverted off. There's also a, a pull-off room there for when people come to see community development about a plan or permit or need to talk. There's also a pull off room there for when people come to see community development about a plan or permit or need to talk to somebody about a code enforcement case. They can have that small private space right off the lobby there to get together and discuss those things. Going down to the southern entrance there, you'll see the full on connection to the existing police station, creating one unified city hall with a administrative wing and a justice wing. That'll also get you into the court. And it's important to note also in the in the most current redesign, there's again that same pull off space there in the new police station lobby where they can have that private conversation with somebody. I know that's been an important thing the police have talked about needing over the years. So going on to the next slide, please. And believe it or not, is actually my favorite one of the whole thing is it's the parking lot. I know. It's just the strangest things that get me going. So the staff parking lot on the on that side of the building there on the western edge, separated by a new security gate from police. So police has secure parking. It increases somewhere between two and five spaces in the police area, probably three. That's still being negotiated there. We're trying to maximize that for future growth. And then as we move to the other side of the building, you've got public and staff parking there. So that is essentially from just to the south of where the existing flagpole is out in front of the police station, just to the south of that, you'll see the pull through there. You've got angle parking. That represents an additional, what, sixteen spaces right there, which that's been a huge issue over the years as well for us when we have that court point load, right? We get that day where it's just overrunning here. And so that'll really help with that. I think as we move into, you know, the next phases and we're working on the police station, we're going to take this same theme, apply it further down and get some more of that parking space back. So I believe that covers the slides that we had to go over around the the campus tonight. Obviously, we've got our metrics in there and then our capital project item. So with that, Mayor, I think I turn it back to you and Jordan and I are here to answer questions.
All right. Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that you and everybody else has been doing on this. I really appreciate council support on the work that we're doing that has been really necessary for the last at least couple decades to to improve city hall here. So thank you all. I'm going to turn to the council. Are there any questions for Jacob or Jordan on this? Go ahead, council member Hanford.
Just a question for clarification. We're keeping the same roof lines, but we're extending out how much compared to the existing footprint? Ten percent? Twenty percent roughly?
Yeah. So the building's not going any further this way. It does gain some square footage. Because I probably have to get back to you on exactly what that is.
I can help you a little bit.
Just a rough.
The room we're in now is getting much bigger. The area over there that Jordan was talking about, so that roof line is going to stay the same. So he's tried to really come up with that hybrid approach where we're redoing everything on the exterior and insulation, all those other things. But we're maintaining some of the existing structure that's still good to save those extra dollars and try to put them into spaces like this.
Yeah.
So this council chambers will get bigger, but it's going that way.
Okay.
Any other questions, council member Hanford?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jordan and Jacob? Council member culture, go ahead.
I'm not so much a question, but I also recognize that you're keeping a lot of the the current type of field, but expanding in ways that just add a whole lot to it. I'm really excited to see this. So well done. And if I come up with any questions, I'll ask you, but I really like what you're doing there. Thanks.
Right. Thank you, council member. All right. There being nothing else. Did you have anything else, Jordan or Jacob?
No.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the community development report and Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Man, I thought it was hard following police department. I get to follow that. So yeah, thanks, Jacob. Appreciate that. So so you have our monthly report in front of you as well, but just a couple of items that I wanted to make mention to is we're pretty proud that we have currently looked at seven essential permitting documents and trying to keep with our Imagine Monroe and creating a safe place for all is we've translated those into Spanish. So that doesn't mean that it's a one and done. We're going to continue to look at trying to transfer some of those to help some of our community members out. Another one that we've done is with the help of HR, we've hired a new code enforcement officer. And it's going, his name is Kevin Price. He'll be starting on September first. We are very excited to be able to get him on board. I know we kind of had a little hiccup the first time when we went back out to find the right person. And I'm very glad that we did. So again, thank you for their help on that. We have both annexations that are still in process even before council, I believe, is even just on August ninth. So those are still in process. And then lastly is hate to toot my own horn, but Ted Corey and myself have received the Wabo's building or code official of the year award, which is a pretty big deal in the Wabo world. That was, there was fourteen of us that actually received that award this year in the work for the what is a building permit document that we sent to you guys a couple of months ago. Again, that was a big project that involved a lot of jurors, different jurisdictions. And it wasn't presented just to Ted and myself. It was actually to the city of Monroe for allowing us to take part in that. So a big thank you for you guys and that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Stacy?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on now to the city administrator report under eleven point one, extended agenda. I'll turn to Deborah. Ms. Knight.
I know, back and forth.
I'm trying to get quicker on this.
Thank you. Just a reminder to council that we will not have a meeting next week on the fifth Tuesday of the month. Typically, we set those aside as placeholders for city council workshops or retreats and one is not needed at this time. On the September sixth meeting, we have canceled both the public safety committee meeting and the regular study session and observance of Labor Day. So we'll have a week off. And then coming up on September thirteenth, we do have a legislative affairs committee meeting scheduled to talk just a brief update with the comprehensive plan and then continued updates to the council rules of procedures procedures with our clerk, Jody Wyckoff. For the regular business meeting, we have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. And then as Becky Hassard had mentioned, the twenty twenty one audit exit may be also scheduled at that time. For the consent agenda, we have the regular items, our accounts payable and payroll, our meeting minutes, and then an acceptance of the deed of dedication for an alley right of way widening with Mr. Peterson. We have final action on the downtown commercial code amendments. And then new business, we've got lodging tax advisory committee appointments and the employee handbook updates. So that's it then for the meeting on September thirteenth.
All right. I turn to council, council member gamble. Go ahead.
I was just going to remind that September is also hydrocephalus awareness month.
That's right. Yep. We'll get that in there too.
Cool. Be great.
All right, council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, for the thirteenth, I know that some of the legislative affairs committee members will be in DC, actually all three of us. So I think we will have to postpone that meeting until the following month.
Thank you.
Yep.
For the reminder.
All right. Thank you. Council member culture, go ahead.
Well, it was pretty much what council member Hamper is saying that we are going to be out of town that day. So unless, I mean, you got to make sure everyone's there or otherwise you don't have a forum. It's going to be close.
Okay. And council members, while I, you, you have the option, if you want to, to take your laptops with you, if you want to do it remotely. Folks can do that also, but we'll make certain that we've got a forum. Are there any council members here that are not heading to DC that know right now that they will not be able to make that meeting? Okay, great. Anything else for now? Okay.
Excellent.
City administrator report. Yep.
Yep. There we go. I did send out to council an invitation to the Economic Alliance Summer Networking Event and did receive a response back from council member Hanford, the key plans to attend. We have two tickets for that event. So if there's anybody else that's interested, let me know. It's actually close to home, relatively speaking, at Hidden Meadows, which is just south of Snohomish off of Spring Getty Road. Looks like a great event hosted by the Alaska Airlines. So if anybody else is interested in attending, you can contact me. Wanted to let everyone know, although I may be stealing some thunder from our clerks department, our clerks and records department was awarded forty six thousand, almost forty seven thousand dollars to digitize community development records. So that's outstanding work on their part. It was really good news because initially they had sent us the wrong amount. So we thought we'd only received thirty seven thousand. We were actually very excited about that. And then before the end of the day, found out we received forty seven thousand. So even better, even better news. So thank you to the to both Sherry Simonsen and Jody Wyckoff for their work on that. It was already mentioned, the Fair Days Parade on Saturday, I did include a picture there, thanks to our public works, parks and police departments for supporting the fair. A lot goes into that. And I just love that picture that Janelle took of our staff hard at work there planning the Fair Days Parade. And then, as I said earlier, city offices will be closed on the fifth and the sixth. Council meetings are canceled and observance of Labor Day. That's it for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for our city administrator for Deborah?
Oh, offices are only closing the fifth, the sixth, the council meeting is canceled.
Yes.
I was wishful thinking maybe there. I don't know what was going on.
Bye. That's an and by the way. Yeah, and.
Yeah, I was reading that and thought, wait a minute, that doesn't sound right. I'm not certain, but I'll say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of reports for me. We had a couple of emails, emails, emails over the last couple of weeks related to issues in the downtown. As the council members already pointed out, a lot of work was done on the east end of downtown in particular to address some of those concerns. So thank you to Public Works. Thank you to our police chief. Thank you to Deborah and other people that were involved in that. And then also I received an email that I forwarded to council about Academy Way and would just encourage council members just to look at that. If you've got any questions about it, please feel free to go ahead and reach out to me. And I have nothing further to report this evening, except that I hope that everybody has a great time at the fair, great Labor Day, and I will see folks at the next meeting on the thirteenth of September. So thank you, everybody. I have no further business this evening and unless there's objection, we are adjourned. No, Jeff, there being no objection, we're adjourned.